Oh, good lord, this is gonna be fun.
All right, I'd like to call to order the September 28th, 2020 council meeting. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
This is microphone.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the real body for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank everyone for being here tonight after tuning in. I just wanted to announce before we do the roll call that Mr. Coyne is filling in for Mayor Hanwell. He's acting mayor tonight.
I'll start over, sorry. Need to turn on the microphone. Before we do the roll call, I just wanted to announce that Council President Coyne is filling in for Mayor Hanwell, and I'm filling in for Council President Coyne, so that's why you see us in different seats tonight. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Simpson?
Here.
Hazelton?
Present.
Hefinger?
Here.
Lamb? Rose?
Here.
Shields?
Here.
Reading of the minutes?
Mr. Shields?
Mr. Simpson?
Yeah, I put a motion that we accept the minutes submitted by the Clerk of Council.
Second?
Second. Clerk, would please call the roll on reading of the minutes?
Hazelton?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Reports of standing committees. I will start with Finance. Our Finance will meet two weeks from tonight. It will actually, I'm sorry, it's two weeks from tomorrow because two weeks from tonight is the federal holiday, so we will meet on a Tuesday, and it will be before council. Streets and sidewalks, Mr. Hefinger?
Thank you, I have no report at this time and no meeting planned.
Public properties, which is myself, no report this evening, no meetings scheduled. Mr. Lamb is not here for special legislation. Health, safety, and sanitation, Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. Shields. No report tonight, no meetings has taken place. I am hoping to hold a health, safety, and sanitation meeting just for updates of what's going to be happening with the Police, Fire, and Sanitation Department. Hopefully, I'll get together with the Clerk of Council, and we'll schedule a meeting in mid to late October or early November. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Water and utilities, Ms. Hazelton?
Thank you, Mr. President. At this point, there are no meetings scheduled, and I have no report this evening.
Thank you. And finally, emerging technologies, Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. President. No report and no meeting scheduled at this time.
Thank you. Requests for council action, there's several. For the Finance Committee, 20-181 Budget Amendments, 20-182 Discuss Uses of COVID-19 CARES Funds, 20-183 Then and Now Ohio Alcohol Monitoring Systems LLC for Municipal Court, 20-184 Increased PO 2027-21 Davis Tree Farm for the Forestry Department, 20-185 Discussion Monville Township Medina Township Fire Contracts, 20-186 Increased PO 2026-25 Walter Haberfield for the Law Department, 20-187 Outfit 2 2021 Ford Explorers for the Police Department, 20-188 Retro Pay Healthcare Coverage Probation Officers for Muni Court, 20-189 928 Approved Disapproved Draft Solid Waste Management Plan Update, 20-190 Fund Advance Request and 20-191 Fund Transfer Request for the Parking Fund. Reports of municipal officers. Acting Mayor, Mr. Coyne?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to start out at this opportunity, though I don't get it often, I just want to thank council for all their hard work. I believe the administration would echo my gratitude to council for their endless hours of dedication to the city of Medina. I also have two emails that came in, one from Rick Kirby at 246 West Friendship. He just had a question regarding feeding the deer and whether or not we can use a local litter ordinance regarding feeding the deer because of all the mess that's made around the ground and feeding the deer. And I guess I spoke with Mr. Huber, the law director, prior to the meeting, and I don't think it would be a violation of the littering ordinance because it's your own property, and you could unfortunately do a lot of things to your own property. And if you have a lot of extra feed on your property, that is not considered littering. However, if it attracts rodents and other nuisance on your property, now you may have a public nuisance or a private nuisance claim that could be brought against you for doing that, and that would be the way to go to solve that problem. Now, Tammy Kirby, who also lives at 246 West Friendship Street, asked a question regarding speaking to the money set aside by the city for the courthouse project, the combined courthouse project with the county, and the possibility to divert, reallocate, or use those funds that were allocated to the courthouse project. Her question is, can we use any of the funds, specifically, I think she's referring to the special court project funds that are derived by the judge and under jurisdiction of the judge? Use those funds, for example, to open a memorial pool next year instead of using those funds to build the courthouse with the county? The answer to that question is no. We have no authority as council to dictate the use of the funds, the special court project funds. That's under the jurisdiction of the judge only, and it's the judge's funds, and their use is limited by pursuant to the Ohio Vice Code for specific court purposes. So, we cannot use the money that has been saved up, approximately $4.3 million, in any other way except for court dictated or court ordered use of those funds by the judge. And the main purpose of those funds, of course, under the Ohio Vice Code, was mainly for special projects like building another courthouse. So that's why they were implemented to begin with. So, just to be clear, those monies that are saved to be used for the courthouse cannot be used for opening a memorial pool or cannot be used to pay a city employee over here for a job or any other use on the city side. The judge is the only person who can order the use of those funds for specific items listed in the Ohio Vice Code associated with the court. And the next about using those monies because of the COVID-19, again, no. You cannot use those monies for any COVID-19 purpose on the city side. Again, the judge has specific uses of those funds dictated by the Ohio Vice Code, and it could only be used by order of the judge. With that, I don't think I have any other comments except for our department heads are doing a great job.
Thank you, Mr. Coyne. Director of Finance, Keith Durham?
Thank you, Mr. Shields. I want to apologize for not having been here at our last meeting, and it kind of ties into your first resolution. About two weeks ago today, I think it was about 2:00 in the afternoon, I got a phone call and was informed that I had been exposed to someone on the previous Friday who had subsequently tested positive for COVID. So, I'm past my 14 days, I don't have any symptoms here, okay. But anyway, so I was advised by the Health Commissioner to stay away from people and so on, and anyway, and ended up having no symptoms, so that's the good news. But I said it ties into your first resolution because you have this resolution commending my deputy, Deputy Finance Director Lori Bowers, and I want to tell you, the deputy finance director is access finance director when the finance director's out of town, which normally those are planned things. I mean, if I'm going on vacation or something, she knows, okay, she's gonna have to cover a meeting. I told her, I think, like 2:00 Monday afternoon, hey, I have to leave because of this COVID thing. There's a Board of Control meeting at 4:30, there's a Finance Committee meeting after that, and then there's a council meeting that night. No, by the way, a couple days from now, there's a budget meeting on Wednesday, and good luck, I've gotta go. And from my understanding, because I wasn't at those meetings, she did a great job of covering for all of those things on very short notice because I didn't have time to give notice, so I really appreciate the work that she does. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durham. Mr. Huber, Law Director? Thank you. Chief Kenny, Police Chief? Economic Development Director, Ms. Kimberly Marshall?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one item to note for council and the public this evening. The Ohio Means Jobs Medina County Office, in conjunction with our Made in Medina County initiative and team, are sponsoring Medina County Manufacturing Virtual Career Fair on Friday, October 2nd, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We have a total of 28 companies participating, and 12 of those companies are city Medina manufacturing employers. And this is part of what, we always do something in October to celebrate manufacturing, and we can't do plant tours this year or our showcase this year, so instead, we have put together the Virtual Career Fair. And if there are people that are interested in participating or they need help with their resume, they can contact Sean Thomas at 330-441-0409, or his email address is sean, S-H-O-N dot thomas at medinomj.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Jansen Worley?
Thank you. Just a quick update on behalf of the Rec Center Director, Mike Wright, in regards to the operations at the Medina Community Recreation Center. Just a reminder for the public that the rec is open Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and on Saturdays from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. All equipment at the rec center is spatially distanced at six feet or more, and they have not yet reached the facility limit of 125 individuals at one time. So therefore, they are now allowing day pass users to attend, and locker rooms are also available. Silver Sneakers programs, their land and water classes are running, and any information regarding future sales or programs that will be offered will be communicated through the Medina Community Recreation Center website, Facebook, emails through Constant Contact, or print ads that can be found in the Medina Weekly News. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Worley. City Engineer, Patrick Patton?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. And our Service Director, Mr. Nino Kukoli?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too would like to thank Lori and the rest of the ladies for the work they do in the Finance Department. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we've got everybody who's here, okay? Notice, communications, and petitions, there are none. Unfinished business, there are none this evening. That brings us to introduction of visitors. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the Chair, and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speaker should approach the microphone, which is in the back of the room there tonight, and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will also be offered the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the Chair or by a vote of the majority of council members, President. Is there anybody who would like to speak tonight to council? Yes, sir. There's a microphone in the back there that... Okay, if you could, we want to make sure it's... All right, and then if you'll state your name and address for the record.
Nathan Case, 513 East Washington.
Thank you.
I'd like to address council today just to tell everyone about the courthouse, and I have a little letter that I've, I'm just gonna read it off here. We're at a point in history that thrives on deception. Me, I'm fed up. We can't watch the news without having to fact-check every detail. Lately, politics are disgusting. Why can't we just hear the facts? Why does proposed legislation have to have hidden motives buried in them? Why does the press have to spin facts and only air part of the quote? We've all experienced this activity at a state and federal level, but now it's happening in our small city. On Independence Day, I was at Medina Square showing my support for this great country, and I saw a group of people in front of the old courthouse. Their sign stated, "Save Our Courthouse." The group all had patriotic clothing and petitions to sign. I thought, what would be more patriotic than saving the old courthouse? I thought, the thought of losing the courthouse from our city's skyline enraged me. I started ranting to myself, the old courthouse is the cornerstone of Medina. How could they think of tearing it down? How could this happen? Then I thought of all the great memories I had as a child and now a parent while attending events around the gazebo. And every memory in the backdrop was that building that achieves such a unique towering majesty over this small town. As I approached the petitioners, they handed me a petition, and I was ready to do the right thing and help this old building. Someone should speak out. I was glad they organized to get the word out. Then a friend of mine stopped me. Somewhere between my ignorance on the topic and their lack of knowledge on their own cause, I stopped. I was not informed enough to sign. What was the fight? Who were the fighters? Who was to gain or lose from this? It turns out to be a cause with a deceiving name. After a little research, they even had a deceiving website, deceiving TV news stories, and deceiving literature. The fact of the matter is, the old 1841 courthouse was never planned to be torn down. There was talk to possibly tear down the 1969 courthouse at the time, but that idea had long passed. The audacity of these petitioners to stand in front of the old courthouse and act like they wanted to protect it was a lie. The TV news stories was right in step with the fraudulent national news. It was three minutes of people chanting, "Save the courthouse," and then a brief interview reiterating the same slogan. There was simply no information on the topic. This is what they want. They want the people of Medina City to use their power of personal representation to vote for city council to relinquish their legislative authority to make decisions at a city level. In other words, they want you to not have a choice in a city matter. Does this sound strange to anyone else out there? That begs the question, what is their motive? What do they gain? Honestly, I can't find anything. Here's what I found. I fact-checked every point, and as I dig more, I will post more stuff on Facebook. The page is called Medina Courthouse Facts. If you vote no, no courthouse buildings will be demolished. This is a new building, not a replacement. The estimated cost of the combined project is $38 million. The county's share will be approximately $30 million, and the city's share is $8 million, nowhere near the $60 million projected by the "Save the Courthouse" propaganda. The municipal court has saved an estimated $4.3 million over the past 20 years. This money can only be used for courthouse or court expenditures. The Capital Projects Fund will be used for $1.8 million. The remainder will be generated by court costs and special project fees. No money will be borrowed by the city. The joint effort enables the city and the county to share the cost of securing, of security, personnel, utilities, elevators, restrooms, waiting areas, and other common areas. For the city to build its own courthouse, the cost was $9.3 million in 2016, which I'm sure is a lot more by now. Collaborating with the county, the cost is only $8 million. That's a $1.3 million difference. The city has spent over $200,000 in design and other preparatory costs, and this will all be lost if the city does not participate in this project. Only the residents are voting on this issue. If it passes, the county will still build the new courthouse without the city. So, vote no. Don't let your voice be stifled by a few people that created a deceiving cause with ill-informed advertising. Read the facts, research for yourself. It's a sad day when the truth gets no press. It's even more depressing that a citizen needs to report the local news because it's not profitable. Please share this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. I'll first entertain a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings of the following ordinances and resolutions. Resolution 16420, Resolution 165-20, Ordinance 166-20, Resolution 167-20, Ordinance 168-20, Ordinance 169-20, Ordinance 170-20, Ordinance 171-20.
Mr. President, I make a motion to suspend the rules requiring the three readings of the ordinances and resolutions that you just mentioned.
Second?
Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Hefinger? Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
For Resolution 16420, I will ask our Deputy Director of Finance, Lori Bowers, to meet me over here. Lori, thank you for being here this evening, and it's a great honor, on behalf of council and the administration, to present you this resolution. I'm gonna read it first, and then we'll vote on it. Resolution, I'm sorry, Resolution 164-20, a resolution commending Deputy Finance Director Lori Bowers for her outstanding service to the city of Medina. Whereas Lori Bowers has worked in the city of Medina since April 30th, 2012, in the roles of Accounts Payable Clerk, Payroll Clerk, and was appointed Deputy Director of Finance on May 8th, 2017. And whereas during the past year, Lori has taken on the difficult task of completely converting and upgrading the city's accounting system. As of September 4th, 2020, the city now has implemented VIP software that is a major upgrade to purchasing, budgeting payroll, utility billing, receivables, banking, asset management, general ledger, and reporting, with safeguards in place to protect the city against fraud, and has the ability to provide employees with many tools to do their jobs more accurately and efficiently. And whereas, her attitude, attention to detail, and genuine dedication since undertaking this enormous task, which required an immense amount of time and effort along with new challenges she has had to face due to COVID-19 pandemic, all while performing her normal job requirements, has been above and beyond. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Medina, Ohio, that Medina City Council, along with the mayor and administration, extend an heartfelt appreciation and sincere thanks to Lori Bowers for her valuable service and dedication to the city of Medina. Thank you, Lori. I do want to say, I know you have several of your coworkers here tonight, and I'd be remiss if I did not also, Liz, and Anita, and Julie, and then also Lily, and Jackie. I really appreciate the work. We, at council, Keith, you said, did she do a good job that night? She did an amazing job filling in as she always does, and we appreciate her very much. At this point, I entertain a motion to approve the resolution?
Mr. President, I move that this resolution be accepted at this time?
Second? Second, by Mr. Rose? Any discussion? Clerk, will you please read the roll?
Hefinger?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, let me start over again. Rose? Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes, again.
Resolution 164-20 passes five zero.
I would just like to say thank you to the mayor and council and the administration for this recognition. This was very unexpected, but greatly appreciated. And this project was a huge undertaking and definitely was a team effort, and I'm so thankful for our staff who spent countless hours in training meetings and learning, and all while continuing the daily operations of our office at their usual high levels of service. So I'm so thankful to them, and I'm thankful I get to work with such an amazing group of people. And of course, thank you to my family and my husband for all their support at home, and I'm really excited about this new software, and I can't wait to share more of it with all the departments and with council. So thank you very much, I appreciate this.
Thank you, Lori. Really appreciate everybody in the Finance Department, and actually, all of our employees here at council. We always try to remind everyone how lucky we are to work with such a great group of people who run the city day to day. And, Mr. Durham, I'll tell you tonight, you're very lucky to work with this group because it's a really fine group in the Finance Department, too, so thank you.
I second that.
Resolution 16520, a resolution donating 21 optiplex computers to the Medina City Schools.
Move to approve?
Second?
Discussion? Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. These donations are in lieu of, these would otherwise go to the auction, and as you know, when we auction off computers, we get basically nothing for them, so these will be useful for the school, and that's better than us selling them for 50 cents or whatever we'd get.
Thank you, Mr. Durham. Just a note, since I work for the school district, I will need to abstain. Is there any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Shields?
Abstain?
Simpson?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Resolution 165-20 passes four yeas, one abstention.
Ordinance 16620, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute preliminary legislation with the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, for the State Route 18 corridor improvement project.
Move to approve?
Second?
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Simpson?
The emergency clause has been requested, I'd move to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause? Discussion on the ordinance or the emergency clause? Mr. Patton?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is, as stated, preliminary legislation between the city and ODOT. Basically, it expresses the city's consent, support, and cooperation for the State Route 18 project that is gonna be starting next year. They were asking for the emergency clause because ODOT submitted this to us just a couple weeks ago, and asked that we return it to them, I believe, by October 1st.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. Any further discussion on the ordinance or the emergency clause? Would the clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Hazelton?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
And would the clerk please call the roll call on the ordinance?
Simpson?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance 166-20 passes five zero.
Thank you. Resolution 16720, a resolution supporting the Friends of the Cemetery's application to ARBnet seeking to designate the Spring Grove Cemetery as an official arboretum.
Move to approve?
Second?
Discussion? Mr. Worley?
Thank you, Mr. President. At the end of 2019, at the cemetery, monthly Cemetery Commission meeting, it was discussed that the commission and the Friends of the Cemetery should consider applying for Spring Grove to be an arboretum. The Friends of the Cemetery discussed this in the early part of 2020. They contracted with Bartlett Tree Expert Company to do a master plan and inventory to start the process to achieve some of the punch list items in order for the arboretum application through ARBnet to be submitted. We have received that report and management plan and are requesting, the Friends of the Cemetery are requesting a resolution of support to apply for it. Since 1997, the Friends of the Cemetery have been committed to investing into the preservation, beautification, and maintenance of the gardens and trees at Spring Grove. At the Finance Committee, there was a question asked about if the city was gonna be bound to anything by Spring Grove getting an arboretum accreditation, and I did some research into that, and the ARBnet program was established to share a widely recognized set of industry standards in the arboretum community. Accreditation for this is entirely free of charge, and it's based on a self-assessment and documentation of certain levels of achievement. This would potentially set us up for a small amount of grant funding through the ARBnet program to help us further the goals and meet different standards to step up, there's five different levels of accreditation. So, we look forward to this resolution getting passed so that we can support their application and work towards getting Level 1 accreditation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Worley. Any further discussion on the resolution?
Mr. President?
I just wanted to thank Jansen for getting that information. Thank you.
Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, as Jansen mentioned, you know, the Friends of the Cemetery has stepped up to the plate again, I feel, on this recommendation for the arboretum. They have spent about $14,000 on a management plan for the trees at Spring Grove, and are committed to spend about $80,000 in 2020 and 2021 to begin work and identify it in the management plan. Again, the city owns and operates the cemetery, but hopefully, all of our residents have been... Again, the city owns and operates the cemetery, but hopefully, all of our residents have, at one time or another, had the opportunity to just walk through the cemetery, which is designated as one of our perks, to see the beauty and how well it is upkept. And a lot of that is due to not only the Sexton and the employees that helped maintain the cemetery, but from the Friends of the Cemetery making all the improvements, and this is just going to be one addition to the improvements that are being made. And just one other thing is, on October 10, at 1:00 p.m., part of this getting accredited is an educational plan that has to be submitted. On October 10, at 1:00 p.m., they're going to have a tour, a walking tour, to identify some of the trees for the public, and you would meet at the Amos Mirrors Building, which is the new building paid for by the Friends of the Cemetery on the east side of the cemetery. So we hope that a lot of people, a lot of residents, will be able to show up and take advantage of this. Hopefully, October 10 will be some nice weather. It's going to happen, rain or shine. We're hoping for shine, so...but again, thanks to Friends of the Cemetery, and Jensen, and your staff for all the hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Any further discussion on the resolution? Would the clerk please call the roll on resolution 167-20?
Heffinger?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Resolution 167-20 passes 5-0.
Thank you. Ordinance 168-20, an ordinance amending Rule 8, Section K, Section 2 of the Civil Service Rules and Regulations of the City of Medina relative to probationary periods for all original appointments.
Move to approve? Second.
Discussion? Mr. Coyne, do you want me to...I will. It mainly had to do with, as we had a upcoming retirement of our fire chief, I think it was determined that the all original appointments, the probationary period was a year except for police and fire positions. And the mayor had requested that Civil Service review that and make everything standard at one year. Does that sound right, chief?
I thought it was one year.
Okay. I was thinking it was two positions, but maybe it was. I know it had to do with the fire chief. He just wanted to make sure it was consistent all the way across. So...is there any other discussion on the ordinance? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Ordinance 168-20 passes 5-0.
Ordinance 169-20, an ordinance amending ordinance number 187-19, passed November 25, 2019, amendments to the 2020 budget.
Move to approve? Second.
Discussion? Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. There's a number of items here. A few of them are pass-throughs, then there's the appropriation of the CARES Act funding, and then the rest of them are just changing the budget to cover grant fund expenditures.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll on ordinance 169-20?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Ordinance 169-20 passes 5-0.
Ordinance 170-20, an ordinance authoring the finance director to make certain fund advances.
Move to approve? Second.
Discussion? Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. An advance is where we loan money from one fund to another. In this case, it's mostly for grant projects because the grants are typically reimbursement, so we have to spend the money and then get the grant, and then repay the advance.
Thank you, Mr. Durham. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Would the clerk please call the roll on ordinance 170-20?
Simpson?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance 170-20 passes 5-0.
And our final ordinance, ordinance 171-20, an ordinance authorizing the finance director to make certain fund transfers.
Move to approve? Second.
Discussion? Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a transfer to the parking fund. The parking fund doesn't have sufficient revenue to cover its costs, so we transfer money to it each year. This is budgeted.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Would the clerk please call the roll on ordinance 171-20?
Hazelton?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Resolution 171-20 passes 5-0.
Council comments?
Mr. President, thank you very much. I just...I'm going to be real short and sweet. Next week, early voting starts, so there are several different ways that you can vote this season. It's so important, as every election season is. You have absentee ballot that should have been mailed to you. If not, you can pick that up at the election board. Again, early voting, and I'm not sure of the hours. I believe it's like 8:00 to 4:00, 8:00 to 5:00. Again, don't rely on me for the hours, but you can, up until, I think, three days before the election, you can go in and request a ballot and vote right there and then. And of course, on November 3, if you want to wait and go to your polling place, vote then. But it's so important, again, as it is every election cycle. This seems to...it's just important. And again, as I always say, just remember, no matter what your political views are, may be different than your neighbors or other family members or your spouse, just remember to respect each other's opinion and remember to be kind to each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson.
Mr. President?
Mr. Rose?
Thank you. This weekend, I had an interesting first experience. Joel and I visited the pickleball league at AI Root Middle School. We were taught the basics, did some practice, and played an actual game. The ladies won big time. I strongly suggest you give it a try. It's not too stressing, not too intense. You can play pretty much at your own pace. Beginner's play is Tuesdays and Thursdays at 10:00 a.m. and Saturdays at 8:00 a.m., weather permitting, at the tennis courts at AI Root Middle School. And I understand that Jensen and Jim Shields work together very well to give them a spot there, so thank you very much for doing that. They are very grateful. Okay? Carol Erickson is the USA Pickleball Ambassador for Medina. She truly enjoys promoting this sport, which keeps our seniors physically and socially active, and provides a healthy outlet for the youth. Carol looks forward to helping seniors learn the game and providing safe and quality courts for the community. And I do believe the URL for the pickleball organization is up on the screen, but if not, it's www.usapickleball.org. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Other council comments?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to acknowledge, as the month of September is coming to an end, that September is both National Recovery Month as well as Suicide Awareness Month. So I just ask that everyone, number one, take a minute to keep those people in your thoughts, whether they're suicide survivors, family members that have lost someone to suicide, friends that have lost someone, as well as Recovery Month, keeping in mind all of the services for recovery and mental health that are available in our community. Some of those are Alternative Paths, Hope Recovery Community, the Recovery Center of Medina County, Belfair, and Ohio Guidestones. So please keep those agencies in mind this month or any month where you may find yourself in a situation where someone you know may need help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hazelton. Important message. I just wanted to also say, I wanted to thank Denny for his reminder to always be kind. I can't tell you how many times during these times, more than ever, when it's...people's patience are on edge, and I remind myself and tell people the story. You know, I have a council member, and he is always reminding everybody to be kind, and it's an important message, and I just appreciate you always repeating that, Denny. I quote you many times, and I try to live by your motto there, so...
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Coyne, anything as council president or as acting mayor?
No, but I appreciate it, and again, I'd like to thank council for all their hard work. I can't stress that enough.
What's your next budget hearing?
Oh, next Wednesday.
No, we don't have a new budget meetings this week. I think we only have one or two left, and then we're finalized with our budget.